Agenda item. Got it. Our first item, agenda item, as always, is the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Well, our roll call is really very simple tonight. We have four of us in attendance. So we will not be looking for a motion to accept the December 6th, 2022 minutes. We will try to take care of that at our next meeting. We, do we have anybody from the public? I don't believe so.
Yeah, we didn't get any requests either.
Okay. So Joanna, do you want to give us an update on the referrals report?
Want to note that there is, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just want to note that the referrals report is missing the months of December and January, and I really apologize for that. The reason I mention that is that the referral of note in the last couple of months has been Middlebury's, Middlebury 45, which is about light industrial district changes that would allow for warehousing. So I just want you to know that, and it's part of my correspondence, I'll just kind of wrap, wrap in the correspondence. I got a FOIA request for Middlebury 45 from an attorney, McDonald. And I also got inquiries from Bob Nurney, Nurney, in his private capacity as a, I believe, Bob, you're a Middlebury resident?
I am.
Yep. So I just wanted to note, note, note that, and other than that, you know, same old, same old.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence?
Well, other than the FOIA, no.
Okay. Next up would be our roundtable discussion. I'll, I'll start it off this evening in Bristol. There are two things that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. At our last zoning meeting, we did approve a density requirement for housing for the elderly, and that density requirement is four units per acre, which was not exactly what the attorneys that were present wanted to do. Now, this is, I'm going to refer to this as kind of like a moratorium because I don't think we're going to get any takers for applications with only four units per acre. But it does give us a starting point to try to arrive at a number of units per acre that would be in compliance with our wishes as well as what would be fair for applicants looking to put in applications. The second thing that I wanted to mention is that this coming Monday at our next zoning meeting, we're going to have a hearing for a carrier project in our downtown business zone. It is for 152,000 square foot mixed-use buildings. This, this is, this is, well, to say bluntly, this is a big deal. We've had our downtown area decimated for a number of years because we took down a mall area. As I'm sure some of you know, this is, this is now going to be the third project that is going in in this downtown area. The other project that most, that has just started to break ground is offices for the Wheeler Clinic. And we're very happy that the development of our downtown area is really moving quite well. So that's, that's all I have to say. Gino, you want to talk about Derby?
Yeah, so 34 is moving along. There's actually a progress meeting tomorrow, 11 o'clock. I'll be going to, to get the details on that. But our Trolley Point project is going to be shovels in the ground March 1st, according to the contractor there, or the builder, I should say. Cedar Village, which is on Minerva Street, that's going to be starting too. We just worked out the fine details there. So all these projects have been approved. And like I said, too, the Derby Shelton Bridge is going. So we got a lot of action downtown Derby. It's been a long time coming, but it's moving in the right direction. So.
Very good.
That's all I have from Derby.
Yeah, it sounds very positive, too.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much, you know. Michelle for Nagatuck?
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry, I have laryngitis, so bear with me.
We certainly will.
I have a few things that Lori Rotella wanted me to just update you on. First of all, the adopt, we adopted the cannabis regulations on January 18th, 2023, with the effective date actually as of yesterday, February 6th. And only, we only had two people show up to the public hearing. Both were in favor of the cannabis regulations, though. Our next point was the zoning commission opted out of the ADUs on November 9th and referred it to the Board of Mayor in Burgess to ratify their decision. The Board of Mayor in Burgess ratified it on December 6th. Also, we have parcel B, the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development Project, that was approved on December 14th, 2022. Phase one will consist of 60 mixed-income units. This is a four-story building with commercial on the first level and residential on the top three. And then we have our tentative festival schedule for 2023. So for our spring festival, it will be on Church Street, as of right now, May 20th. And for our Fourth of July Festival on Old Firehouse Road on July 3rd. And our Mission 22 Fall Festival is on Church Street, September 23rd. And then our fourth and final would be the Light, the Night Winter Festival on Church Street and on the Green on December 2nd. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much. And please thank Lori for making sure that Nagatuck was both represented and for allowing for the report to be done. Bob?
Yeah, let's see. Whoops. Okay, I'm muted. So yeah, we have a couple of things going on. We have a mixed-use overlay district involving the Thomaston Avenue, lower section of Thomaston Avenue. The applicant was the owner of Colonial Plaza, which, if you're familiar with the Plaza, it's a, I would describe it as an underperforming shopping center. And the concept is to try to broaden uses to hopefully try to rejuvenate that particular center and a number of several properties to the north. We're looking at a March 22nd hearing date. We requested send the referral to, to the COG. So it'll be both a regulation and map amendment, keeping the underlying zoning in place, increasing the overlay. The other thing that we're involved in is, we're members, Waterbury is a member of the Urban Coalition. It's the five largest cities in the state. And we've been working up a master agreement for 5G technology. And it seems to finally be coming to fruition. But basically, it's an agreement with the carriers that would allow for use of public utility poles, those that are owned by, by the municipality. In Waterbury's case, the lion's share of poles are actually owned by EverSource and some by Frontier. Want to say we have about 700 poles that are mostly clustered around the downtown and sort of radiating out a little ways from the downtown. But this would allow use of the poles. Some would argue that they have the right to go on the poles anyway. But what I've been doing is working with the group and we've come up with design standards that hopefully will provide the carrier some options, but all, but, but to do so in hopefully a tasteful and sort of discreet way. So that's about it. Those are the two big things we've been kind of working on.
Thank you very much, Bob. All right, moving along, regional plan of conservation and development.
I just want to acknowledge that Kim McNeil joined us from Southbury. Would you perhaps like to invite her?
Let's, let's back up and then we'll invite Kim to give us a report on Southbury.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Glad to have you with us.
I don't have too much to report this week. We do have a, we had a, our Michaels opened and that's all, we've already made use of it and we had our 350th kickoff in January with a nice presentation. And then we had a snow and ice festival over the weekend and our arts and culture, our decent arts and culture subcommittee was there and provided crafts and face painting. Therefore, the Michaels. And our POCD draft is available for public comment and we're hoping to see that process completed possibly this month.
Thank you very much, Kim. And again, thank you for joining us. All right, now Joanna, the regional plan of conservation and development?
Okay, let's do it. Okay, so just to let you guys, everyone know that we are making progress. We had an online survey for the general public, which was open from July of 2022 through January 31st of 2023. We did advertising through various media. We, we did press releases, Facebook. We were really trying our darndest to, to do at least better than what we, what we did last time. And as far as after I closed the public outreach survey, the online survey, we have 89 responses. And there actually are paper copies that were distributed to Watertown and I hope to pick those up Wednesday through Friday. I'm not sure which day yet, but they were from a senior center in Water, Watertown. I apologize, from Watertown. Also, we are continuing meetings with planning and zoning commissions. To date, we've met with 10. Seymour is this Thursday. One, one planning and zoning commission declined. That's Woolkit. We've had a lot of great discussions, most recently with Beacon Falls. And that really what, what strikes me is that the regional perspective varies. Some, some places, they really do have a sense of 19 towns, but most people are just very local or, you know, like in Southbury, they, they, they really feel a little bit more closer to West Cog. The towns around West Cog, which, which would kind of make sense. But it was just interesting getting how people think of the, the region or if they think of it at all. So and then I wouldn't blame them if they didn't. So hopefully it was also a learning process about the NVCOG when we were going out to the planning and zoning commissions. So right now, what I'd like to do is share some of the results from that online survey. And then I'm going to go into some of the data that we're starting to visualize from our, from our review of census data and others. So as far as where the respondents are from in that online survey, most of them came from Derby, Southbury, and Waterbury. As you can see, we didn't get any responses from Beacon Falls or Bristol. The, the age range of the respondents, most of them were in this 51 to 67 age range, with the average age being 52, the youngest that participated 19, the oldest 99. And as far as the gender identity, slightly more women than men. And then these are, what I'm going to do now is go through some of the questions that were asked and some of the responses that, that were given. So the housing, 10 years from now, do you expect to live in the region? About two-thirds of the respondents said yes, and that's a wonderful thing. When, when we asked why or why not, I know this is a word cloud and it kind of is a little bit in the abstract, but truly some, some of the people, I should mention not some, but the people who answered retirement were both because they're in the, in this place and because, and they're moving out because of retirement. I heard probably more so the moving out because of retirement. But a lot of people say, this is my home. This is where my family is. I've lived here for 30, 20, 30 years and I want to stay here. So that was the general sentiment that, that we got. As far as how do people travel between towns? So pretty much, what's your mode of transportation? What's the one, what's the thing that you use most often when you want to travel between towns? And most, and as you can see overwhelmingly, it's a private vehicle. And in the follow-up question, how do you think the transportation is going to change in the next 10 years? 75 people answered that. 25 said no change, so about a third. But many were very hopeful for change, whether it be through electric vehicles, increases in public transportation. Hopefully, they're, they're hoping that traffic will improve. Now, as far as the environment, the question in the survey was, are we doing enough to improve the state of our environment? 87 people out of those 89 answered this question with a slight majority saying no. And when we asked a follow-up question, how can we do, what can we do better? 65 people answered and they gave lots of ideas and a lot, and the ideas spanned from increasing development on brownfields, improving waste removal, enacting development controls, energy conservation, water and sewer system improvements. So those were what we got with the environment. Now I'm going to go into some of our data that we're analyzing. Population trend, this is for the all 19 towns from 1940 to 2020. And then going into a projected, you can't really see, I, it didn't, can't really see the shading, but 2030 and 2040 are projected populations. As you can see, there was a big old spike between 1950 and 1970. And then things have slowly, you know, tapered off and in getting a little bit more static. And if the state of Connecticut is to be believed, then our regional population is expected to decline by 2040, only slightly. Now, when we dig a little bit deeper into the population trends, now we're looking at nat, natural population, which is the natural change of births plus deaths. And it was in 2014 is the first year when we had more deaths than births. And it's kind of fluctuated and kind of stayed the same. I'm thinking that the 2020 estimate is affected by COVID. But still, it's, it's, you can see that, you know, before it was always more births than deaths, but 2014 was the first year. So we're looking at maybe a static, more static population in the region. What I want to show you here, persons with a disability. So this is the percent of your non-institutionalized population, the residents in your town, non-institutionalized residents in your town that have identified as having a disability. And we are comparing 2012 with 2020. And in almost every town in the Nagatuck Valley Council of Governments, there's an increase in the number of people with disabilities. Slight decreases are in Middlebury, Nagatuck, Oxford, and Southbury, but they're very slight. This is something, I know that this might not be the best to view. I would definitely visualize this in a different way for the report. But this is something that comes up a lot among, when I heard about planning and zoning, when I was attending the planning and zoning commission meetings, school and public school enrollment. As you can see, Waterbury is the highest. But pretty much every town in our region, the public school population is generally decreasing with the only places that there were slight increases, Oxford, Woolkit, and Southbury. And Bob Nurney was just talking about internet capacity. So what, what we are also looking at is infrastructure in our regional plan of conservation development. This is broadband fiber network. The map that you see, this is a map of the broadband fiber that is able to deliver, to deliver 1,000 of download and 100 upload speeds. This is what the state of Connecticut is as their state goal for everybody to have that type of access to the internet, that those speeded accesses. Where you see no colors, that means that there is no, at least as per September 2022, there were no fiber lines to those communities. And where, where you see the, I should also mention that where you see these geographical areas, those are census tracts. So part, part of Watertown does have, the other part doesn't. So it seems like the communities that are a little bit lacking, Southbury, Middlebury, Woodbury, and Bethlehem, and Thomaston at this point. And what, what you see in red is a very, 10% of those locations have access. And where you see yellow is 70 to 100% have access to that 1,100 speed. And just to give you, just per, for a little bit of education, FCC considers a served population as 100 to 20, but less than 1,000 to 100. 99, almost 100% of the NVCOG region has at least 100 download and 20 upload speeds for internet availability. The other thing that you should know is in 2021, the state of Connecticut did pass an act concerning equitable access to broadband. And that's where the state of Connecticut is hoping to take advantage of upcoming federal grants and federal monies to improve and build up the infrastructure so that everyone has access to a very speedy and internet that helps you participate in culture, in education, and in work. So now I'm, I'm going to close up here and just say that what we're finding is no, no big, no big surprise, population is aging and it is static. The transportation, there's a preponderance of private vehicle use, but there is interest in bus, rail, non-motorized travel options. And the labor force, it is aging and retiring the workforce, you know. Who is going to step in for the retiring workforce? We're not sure. So right now, I just want to open to questions or your thoughts and ideas on what I've presented this evening.
Anybody?
So this is Gino Derby. I have a question. So in 2014, it showed that there was more deaths than births, right?
In the 19-town region, the 19-town region.
Right. So do we know, was there any type of events or why that happened there? Do we have any detail? I mean, I don't remember to be honest with you, but.
Right, right. I personally don't, but that's something that we're, we're going to be looking into.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Gino. Any, anybody else?
Yeah, I had a question. So when, when we're looking at population, are, are we considering inward migration? Or instance, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, certainly there, there would have been some, you know, reflection of the deaths during COVID, but I'm wondering if it also accounts for any of the relocations, particularly from New York. We've seen an awful lot, lot of that in, in Waterbury. But 2020 might have occurred maybe just a little bit before that trend. Do you have any thoughts on that, Joanna?
So first of all, I just want to parse out, natural population change does not account for migrations.
Got it. Okay, so it's just.
Right, right, exactly. That's just strictly Department of Public Health. These, I want to say that they do. And I, you know, something I did actually, I, I didn't, I, I had it, I, I'd also have a slide, not, not in this deck today, but as far as comparing 2010 and 2020, how many, you know, there's a American Community Survey question, where did you live one year ago? And that's, that's what accounts for residential migration. And the overwhelming, the number one answer was, I lived in the same place, 90%. In the same years, 2010 and 2020, I lived in the same place. And moving from a different county was, it just slightly decreased from 7% in 2010 to 6% in 2020. So it, you know, it, I, I'm thinking that perhaps we didn't account for it quite yet in 2020. I would say we should be looking to, in the, in the next couple of years, at the next American Community Survey answers for reflecting that data. That would be my answer.
Actually, I'm, I'm kind of surprised that we didn't see an influx during the pandemic because so many people were working remotely. And I thought that would be a change in their residence because they, they can work from anywhere. And I, and I, I hope that, or I, I had thought that Connecticut had seen an increase in population from people moving from, let's say, the New York metropolitan area to Connecticut.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't, oh, I'm sorry. I don't think that would, I don't think that would reflect in 2020, right? So March of 2020 was when the pandemic kind of started. So it would be, you know, by the time we kind of got going on what was going to happen and, you know, kind of got things, it probably wasn't, people, I don't think started moving or grasping that they were going to be working from home for an extended period of time until at least 21, right?
Gene, you're, you're right. And, and the actual census, actual, the, the, the surveys went out in April of 2020. So I think people, you know, when they started moving, I think it was later 2020 into 2021. That would be my, my understanding.
Yeah.
Interesting to see what it will project, what the numbers will be in the projected areas.
Yeah, for sure.
Whether your projection holds true or not. Anybody else?
Oh, go ahead. That's, no, 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 you're, you're the chair. You're, you're, you're the person.
Any other comments? I, I just have one other thing. I'm really embarrassed that Bristol didn't have anybody that responded. You had 89 respondents.
Just from the online version, they're, they're, once I collect Watertowns, they'll be a little bit more.
Had you expected that there would be more?
I was hoping, I was hoping for at least 100, but it wasn't to be.
What was, what was it the last time? Because you made reference to trying to improve.
So I, I'm, I'm speaking from anecdotal information and that was from the COG C and B, which was the 13-town region. And I know that their public outreach was more of an afterthought than, it was more like after the fact and as opposed to what we're trying to do now is incorporate it into every step in the process as much as we can.
So this is really a starting point?
I believe so, but I, I think it's a good starting point.
I do, I do too.
I did post it in all of our community groups in Southbury, so I'm glad to see that you got some Southbury.
Yay, Southbury!
Southbury, congratulations, Bristol. You got a lot of work to do here. Thank you, Joanna. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Rich, is Rich on?
I don't believe he's on. But I can, I can just give a quick update is that they have drafted the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. But I can, I can just give a quick update is that they have drafted the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. I know that they were in the process of sending out public notices to review the draft. So you should be seeing something in the near future to look it over.
Thank you. Sustainable CT, Christine.
Hello.
Hello.
Sorry, just let me get my camera on here. Okay, hi. Yeah, so I wanted to remind everyone about the Sustainable CT Fellows. We have them joining us each summer to assist the towns with their Sustainable CT certifications. I'm not sure, is anyone unfamiliar with Sustainable CT, the program, or what the fellows do?
I'd like to hear more about what the fellows do.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. I just didn't want to bore you if you guys were already familiar, but so Sustainable CT is this, it's a nonprofit that offers certifications for municipalities. Basically, it's based on a menu of sustainable actions you can take and you're awarded points for each action and you can receive a bronze, silver, or they're developing a gold certification. And this is just a, it's a really good PR thing for your town. And for a lot of towns, they already do these awesome sustainable things. The issue is documenting them in order to get the credit. And that's really where the fellows can come in is over the summer, these are, you know, basically interns that are housed with the COGS and they reach out to the towns, the beginning of summer, usually around early June and say, what can we help you with? And the towns will say, well, we, we have this one task that we couldn't get around to that was like, you know, let's say, trainings, equity trainings for our for staff members. And so the fellows would go and they'd, let's say, find some trainings that people could go to, help them sign up, get them done, and then put the documentation on the website so they can get credit. So that's an example of what the fellows would do for you. If you could go to the next slide, please. So, oh, it looks like my slides got a little messed up here. I'm sorry about that, but the, the reason I'm coming to you in February, when it's still so far away, is that I've seen the last two years that I was involved with this program, it is very hard when a fellow reaches out in June and the town has not thought at all about how they will use the fellows, especially if the town is not even started with Sustainable CT. It can be very challenging because there's a few steps, as you'll see here on the screen, that you need to take in order to even get started earning those credits. So I'm really strongly trying to make a push to encourage the towns to get these three steps out of the way so you can make the most of the fellows when they're here. So the first thing to do is just find some interested people. You're going to need one staff member and then you can find other people from the community or other staff members as well. So this might, you know, the town planner is a very natural fit for something like this. But I, I don't know, maybe your purchasing director does a lot of stuff with energy for the town. It might be a, a good fit as well. So you form a committee of people. The next thing is passing a resolution. This is also a very straightforward thing, but as you all know, it takes lead time, right? You have to get it on the agenda, usually several weeks in advance. There's a link in your agenda packet to the sample resolution that they have, but it's basically just saying, yes, Southbury agrees that Sustainable CT is a worthy pursuit and we would, we are going to look into getting the certification. And then finally, you just have to register on the Sustainable CT website. That's where you'll be able to submit your documentation and track your points towards getting the certification. So those are the three steps that I'm hoping that you'll think about before June, so that once the fellows get here, they'll hit the ground running and they'll be able to give you all the help and support that you need. If you have any questions about Sustainable CT in general or what the fellows can do for you this summer, please send me an email and I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. And certainly if there's any questions, let me know.
Christine, thank.
Can you put your email in the, in the chat?
Sure, it's also on the screen right now.
Oh, it is.
There you go.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to add a certain extra point. In, in the, in the photo that you see there, Desera is all the way to the right. And she was a Sustainable CT Fellow who ended up working for the COG. So you never know where the Sustainable CT Fellows will land.
Wonderful. Wow. Okay. Christine, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question or comment or an observation? Okay, well, this certainly has been a very short meeting. I, is there anything that anybody would like to bring up in addition to what we've had on our agenda? Hearing nothing, I'm going to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman White, just want to say that Savannah Nicole did publish that the MTP, there's a link in the chat. I can, I will be sending some follow-up tomorrow in the email with those links. And there is going to be a hybrid public hearing on February sixteenth and a virtual town hall on March ninth. And, you know, we, we look forward to your public input.
You're going to send this out tomorrow?
I will send it out. Yep.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you. I, I, I'm going to lose how to handle this. Normally we'd ask for a motion to adjourn. We don't have a quorum, so I'm going to say if there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.